Showtime. Let's call the meeting Monday, July 13th, Plan and Commission Meeting to Order. Call to order, roll call. Daniels, I'm here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Emma, not with us. Dee Lundell, not with us. Glenn?
Here.
Matt, are you with us tonight?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay. Got that. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes from the June 8th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those also.
I'll second them.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any input from the citizens? Issues not on the agenda? Nobody in the crowd, okay. Let's move on to public hearings. Number one, conditional use for John Anderson at 201 Main Street West to allow a height variation of proposed accessory structure to be constructed on his property. Anybody here to voice their opinion on that? There's no Mr. John Anderson here. No.
Oh, I thought that was kind of approved last time. I'll make a motion. We approve the conditional use permit for John Anderson.
I'll second.
This is just part of the conditional use hearing. We'll do that next.
Part of the public hearing.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
Well, there's no, nobody wants to talk about Mr. Anderson's proposal. Okay, let's open and close that meeting. The conditional use permit for Mr. Anderson and move on to B, conditional use for Valley View Recovery Center. Anybody here wants to speak up? We're limiting to three minutes this evening. Go on, go on, go on.
Should I speak now, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead. Stand up there and state your name and tell us what you think in three minutes.
All right, I'm Jack Lucking from Cannon Falls, 31815 Willow Trail. I stand strongly opposed to this. This is going right in our neighborhood, in our residential area. I know it doesn't impact Cannon Falls a lot because it's on the other side of Highway 52, but it impacts us residents. It impacts the people in Cannon Falls Township and the people in Stanton Township. My neighbors are totally against it. Mike and Kathy Briggs, my neighbors, are totally against it. It was turned down in Red Wing because the residents spoke up there. I talked to some of the county commissioners and that's exactly why it was turned down in Red Wing. People spoke up against it. I know this is for a conditional use permit. I'd like to hear the planning commission's ideas on what conditions are going to put on this because of conditional use permit, there are conditions. I have several. I'd like to have where this, this place, treatment center, has a regular cafeteria, restaurant, so these people can have three meals a day. They say they're going to be catered meals, but not all of us eat at the same time during the day. That's a concern of mine. One of the most important things when you go through treatment is a healthy diet. So I'd like to hear what the planning commission or anybody here has on conditions that you'd like to put on this facility. I'd like to have a curfew where there's no walking in the neighborhood after dark. That's just some of my ideas, but I stand totally against this. This was going in your residential area, you wouldn't want it. We have a lot of children out in that area, so I'm totally against it.
Okay, Jack. Anyone else like to step forward, state their name?
John Peterson, Cannon Falls. I'm guessing I'm not the only one here for whom this feels a little like deja vu, and I'm not going to repeat myself from last time. Most of you were here then. I'd just like to challenge one of the ideas that I know has been thrown out a few times, both by the planning commission and by the council, and that's the notion that there's no room to put conditions on this facility because they're operating under a state license. To me, that, that's sort of a false argument. There are a lot of businesses, my own included, that require a state license to operate, and yet we still have a conditional use that defines how we fit in the neighborhood, how we fit the zoning. And so I would ask that you not, not bypass the conditional step simply because they're required to get a state license. So, you know, Jack mentioned the commercial kitchen. As somebody in the food business, I see that as a real win-win. I've heard at, at these meetings in the past, I've heard Mr. McGuire say that he's open to conditions and would welcome conditions. I believe that there's a win-win opportunity for you here to forge a path where you do put some conditions on something like a kitchen, like any of us would be required to do. If we were to open a 54-bed hospital or a 54-bed boarding school, we would probably be required to put in a commercial kitchen or the graduated in headcount, things like that that have been mentioned. But I would ask you not to, not to bypass the conditional steps simply because, because they have a state license. And I think there's an opportunity for, for you to do your job as the planning commission and put some conditions on that would appease both sides. Thank you.
You? Anyone else?
Cindy Lucking, 31815 Willow Trail.
Excuse me, could you pull the microphone down a little bit?
How's this?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. I'm here as a grandmother. I've been a resident for 30 years here and just strongly opposed to it, as well as the neighborhood, very opposed to this. And my concern is all the young children in the neighborhood, I counted probably a dozen, starting from 300 feet to 600 feet to a quarter of a mile, and that's not including teenagers and grandkids and kids that might come in for a field trip to Ferndale or elsewhere. And I'm just thinking, this would never have been allowed, well, it is never allowed, near a school or a church. So how can you say it's okay in a neighborhood like ours? I mean, it isn't. There's safety concerns and so I just wanted to point that out. I talked to a neighbor yesterday who's older than me. He's been here 35 years and always have felt safe, but he said now, I'm scared. And that's just, it's not good to have put this fear and so I just wanted you to realize that and thank you.
Anyone else opposed or in favor?
Hi, I'm Dick Peterson, Cannon Falls as well. And I'm, I am not afraid, I have to say, of, of this venture. I, you know, I think it's needed, but I do think the conditions are needed too. I think there's not another facility of this type that you wouldn't have a requirement of a commercial kitchen. As we heard the last time, the plan was to cater everything from Little Oscars, which I understand is now closed down. So I think that's, you wouldn't put a nursing home there without a commercial kitchen. You wouldn't put any facility like that without a commercial kitchen. And I just, just think in a public, public arena, that would be an important condition in my mind. Thank you.
Dick, next.
Ray Schoenfelder here. I own the property on both sides of the, of the proposed venture here. My first thing is that I understand the residents, their concerns, I guess, but we are, as all you guys know, this is not a residentially zoned property. All of our property there is all business. I didn't state it. You guys were the ones that made it commercial. And I, but like I said, I do totally understand the residents, but then again, that is zone commercial. And, and I understand this is a conditional use hearing, I guess, if you want to call it, and I think that's what we should be talking about. Not whether or not people want it or not, but that's the fact, this is commercially zoned property. It is totally within the rights of the city, totally in the rights of the owners there, that it is a commercial property. So I just want you guys to be aware that it is.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joe Hamburger. I am the general manager of Cannon Power Sports. Again, I run the business that's neighboring to this. One of the things that I've heard over and over talked about in the last time I was here, I heard it too, is the concerns for the community and the kids in the community and stuff like that. I can appreciate that. It's a good argument. It's a solid argument, and it means a lot to a lot of people. But what occurs to me is on both sides of my property, I have hotels. We have people coming in and out of those hotels every single solitary day. We don't know where they come from. We don't know where they're going afterwards. So we already live in a community on that side of the highway that has people that we don't understand where they're coming from and who they are coming into that area. That happens every single solitary day. The advantage of having a facility like this is we will know who these people are. They will have identities in terms of registrations, driver's license, we'll know where they came from, where they're going to. We have access to a lot more information about who's coming in than we do people running simple businesses on both sides of our property. And I think that's an important thing to, to remember, that this concern about who's coming into our neighborhood is something that's been taking place on that side of the highway since I started working down here. And rightfully so, the good businesses, and I think this one will be too.
Thank you. Next, if anyone.
Cheryl Bauer, 3191364th Avenue. In regards to the area that this is built in, again, this is kind of repetitive from the last meeting, but I both live and own a business on the same street that this is looking to be located, and I don't see it as a, a place to be frightened to live near. I do have one of the lodging establishments that, like Keith talked about, that has the people that come in every day and every day, and as long as you're managing your property, I think you avoid the problems that could come with that. So, and I guess as part of the planning for our city, I mean, I see a business to the, you know, businesses, at least one business to the right of me, empty, across the highway from me, empty. I hate to see another one on the same side as us, empty. If we can find a business who can come in to this property and fill our tax base and help us with our water bills and all the stuff that this can do for our community, I see that as all pluses. You know, and if Bavesh has an opportunity to, to find a business that can use his property as a best use and, and it fits most all of the needs, you know, it's been made pretty obvious the last few years that we just don't have the commerce in Cannon Falls to support three lodging establishments very well. So if he can find someone who could come in and use this as best use, I see that as another plus, that we don't have another empty business and building sitting in town in Cannon Falls.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello again. My name is Andrea Tajee, and I am a Cannon Falls resident in Stanton Township as well. Again, we're reiterating a lot of the things we already discussed, and I just want to acknowledge and validate, you know, people that are quite honestly scared of the unknown. It's something that's foreign to them. They're not aware of these things, and I just want you guys to hear that a lot of the things being said are assumptions and opinions that are not based on facts. There are treatment centers that are located, my old one, I worked at, two blocks from a school. There are programs that have catering and have for years, that's completely okayed by the state, things like that. This is a really great opportunity to provide jobs and stimulate the economy, and it is going to be well, well-regulated. We're going to have, you know, staff 24/7. We're going to have curfews, all of those things. But again, really none of that matters. What matters tonight is zoning specifically, not whether or not the community wants this, it's specifically zoning. So just, you guys know that, but I think it's important for us to remember why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. All right, let's close the public hearing for the Valley View, conditional use. Move on to discussion items. Let's take care of number A first, John Anderson. Any discussion with the commission? Hearing none? Motion to accept or deny?
I'll make a motion. We accept the conditional use permit for John Anderson.
Glenn Lundell?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next resolution for the Valley View Recovery Center, discussion on the commission.
Yeah, I'll start it out. I, I understand the concerns of those that are opposed to this. However, at the end of the day, both the planning commission and the council next week, our only job is to look at the zoning and land use, period, nothing else. And if it meets that criteria, which we have findings of facts, which show that they do meet all the criteria, we are virtually legally obligated to approve it. And that's, that's where I stand on it.
However, I believe we can add stipulation that the city council can listen to and take for what it's worth.
They, they can, yes. But certain ones, they were talked about last month, and Dave Kendall, who was, Andrea's here tonight, but Dave Kendall was here last month, and he explained some of the things like limiting the number of people there. What were some of the other ones?
He tried to narrow it down to, like you said, zoning. It was property, road, parking. There were basically four categories that we could address, but operations, the number within their property, that would be something that would have to honestly just come to a, you know, agreement. If they said that they want to build a kitchen, we'd have to take them at their word. I don't think we could hold them to that as far as the, as the conditional use permit that would be.
Andrea, could you weigh in on this, please?
Sure, that's correct. Operational standards are things we can't.
I can't hear you, Andrea.
Yeah, press.
Forgot about the button. Operational standards are things that you really can't provide conditions on. It really has to be related to the impact on the surrounding community, public health and welfare, traffic. Do they have sufficient parking, landscaping, lighting, any sort of noise that's generated? But it really can't be operational or limiting. I don't see any basis for limiting the number when you have a hotel that already had served that many people.
Can we ask questions? Would you guys be willing to answer if we asked? Were there any compromises that you guys thought of bringing to the table about the issues like kitchen situation or any of that?
I had thought of some of, I'm Jacob McGuire, owner, CEO of Valley View Recovery Center. I had thought of this really hard, and after the attorney at the last week's meeting, opened my eyes to what is limited to enforce for conditions, and I don't, I've had a very hard time coming up with a single condition. I meet all four requirements. I follow everything that the state, you know, whether it's a food license or a lodging license or whatever license it is, I have to follow it strictly by the state. So all the conditions that can be put on me are, are by about 10 different state agencies already.
Jacob, in the parking lot on the, let me think about this here, the north side, the biggest part of the parking lot, does your property line only run to where the parking ends?
No, there's about a 50-foot grass area on the other side of that.
Okay.
I measured that. There's a, there's 50 feet past the parking lot to the north of green space.
Right, because I drove out there again this afternoon to take a look. Would you be possibly open to maybe putting some sort of screening, trees, bushes or something to, you know, for a site thing? Obviously, you can't on the other side because Cannon Power Sports is there over there.
They have the fence. I would, I have talked to the current owner of that, and I have talked about possibly purchasing that property in the future. Those talks didn't, you know, we just kind of felt, you know, that it would be a possibility in the future. We wanted to see where this meeting went before going any further into that talk, but I'm not sure of, you know, what the stipulations would be and what kind of, you know, whether it's a privacy fence or trees or what it really is, you know, what the stipulation would be.
Right, because our, our zoning does talk about screening, which could be a fence or probably the easier, of course, is planting trees and bushes and that kind of thing.
The zoning talks about whether it's meant to like a residential next to an adjacent residential property or residential zone, and I, I would be open to some talks about it. I'd like to know more specifics before agreeing.
And the lighting situation isn't changing? I know that was also a category, so it'll be the exact same as it is now.
Exact same.
Have you found anybody else to do your catering? Explored that issue?
So they are still open, and they want to cater to us fully. I haven't talked to any restaurants about maybe taking up like one meal a day to help lighten the load on Little Oscars, but.
So she has, she has chosen to close just because of all the stipulations to provide and be there all the time?
She wants to make sure that she can be there for us instead of getting closed down for a COVID-related thing from the state.
And as Andrea explained earlier, that's an operational issue which we cannot
Correct.
I have.
Do anything about.
The, the menu, the nutritional value in the menu has been, went over by the Minnesota Department of Health, Health Survey Team. There's a state licensed RN that they hired to make sure that your menu is up to what it needs to be or exceeds the nutritional value. So between the food pool and lodging, the food, Minnesota Department of Health, food, and then also the Health Survey Team, anyone that deals with my food has already been through it and agrees. been through it and agrees that it's good to go.
Would you have any plans in the future of having your own kitchen instead of having it contracted out?
Right. Um, I would still contract out the labor, I believe. You know, I'm not in the business of, um, creating menus and serving food and hiring, hiring cooks and stuff like that. So I would contract out the kitchen.
Good.
Most likely to someone like a Little Oscars. So then there's not as much of the back and forth with food and, you know, and I do want to, I do, would like to see how it goes with them and maybe if they want a few days off a week, you know, diversify the amount of the different kinds of, um, businesses bringing food into the facility to where you don't have all eggs in one basket. But I think that that would be best for the community. I think it'd be best for me and for Little Oscars to maybe take a couple of days to diversify the caterers in the, in the facility.
Yeah, we don't have any control over that, but, but do you have something like if there's a snowstorm or something where?
I would.
Oscars couldn't get down, that you've got some food backup?
Yeah, we definitely have fridges and, and stock of like dry food. Um, it's, it's limited to what we can produce being on a limited, uh, food license. So things like sandwiches, we have onsite at all times, cereal, sandwiches. We would definitely have enough to feed people for, to get past a snow.
Keep them alive?
Right, right.
Okay.
And, yeah.
I guess I've got one question. It's probably not so pertinent, but what are you going to do with the smokers? I'm guessing they can't smoke on the facility, so they're going to have to leave or you're going to supply them with an area that they can?
Everything out back, so near that tree line out on the west side, um, is going to be a smoking area. No one can smoke out in the front or the side of the building. It's, anytime someone steps foot outside of our facility, it has to be supervised. So, you know, like, let's say the men are on odd, uh, even smoking times, so like 10 o'clock, women would be on odd smoking times. One of the behavioral health technicians would go out there and supervise the, the people smoking. They'd get a 10, 15-minute smoke break, have to go back in the building. And then if they're going to get their, their smoking, uh, their tobacco, lighters, whatever it is, like a family member or someone would have to bring it to the facility for them. We're not going out shopping for their cigarettes and their stuff like that.
Okay, because it, uh, that can be a, an annoying issue.
The smoking, yes, a nuisance.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't look so good when you're out in the front of a facility with six or eight people standing on the edge of the road.
Right.
Everybody's puffing and all the buds end up on county or city property.
I've been, I've been thinking about putting a small, like, um, privacy fence out back just so they know exactly where their boundary is to.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Right.
Any other questions on the commission?
I don't.
Just the one citizen who had brought up, uh, curfew. Obviously you have in-room lights out. I assume that's enforced with security?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just to, that's a non-issue.
Most definitely.
Okay.
Diane, can you think of anything we haven't covered here?
I think that you guys have covered everything pretty well. What do you think, Andrea?
No, I think you have. I think you'll need to determine if you think of any conditions and what those, the specifics of those might be. With respect to the landscaping, um, the concern there, I think, is they'd have to develop a landscape plan that they would have to stick to and that landscape plan has to be approved by the city council and you don't have anything like that at this point. And I think, as he noted, it's typically something you would require in connection with an abutting neighborhood as opposed to another business. And so if, if you intend to approve this, my recommendation is that your motion would be, um, a motion to recommend approval to city council and approval of the findings of fact, um, by the planning commission that have been brought before you.
Any other discussion? Do you want to break that down into two motions then?
Well, I'll make it one motion to approve Resolution 2020-4 along with the findings of fact that we have to support this.
Can I just ask one thing? I think the findings of fact mention landscaping. Is that something you want in there? Because we don't, it's really not very detailed about what that is for a requirement.
We'd want to describe what particular area we would want to put the screening on?
And if you want a screening at all.
I'm trying to think if we, um, I don't necessarily want to force them. I don't know if anybody that's been out there on the northern side of their property, there's nothing from the edge of their parking lot until the road, basically, which has got to be close to 100 feet.
Well, there's, um.
Or more.
There's closer to 150, 175 feet from the property over to the, the abutting property line, from the building.
Right.
To the property line.
But right now it's pretty open. I know on the other side of the road, uh, there's a fair amount of trees and stuff on the Peterson property. Uh, there's, to the west, there's those trees in the back.
Yeah.
Um, and on the, uh, north side of the property, there's that one big tree on the, just outside the parking lot on that side. But other than that, it's pretty open, so.
Well, and we didn't require the, um, you know, owner before to have the fence there and there's more cars there then than there probably will be now.
Right.
I would think, so I just don't see any real reason to, you know, require it if he wants to like.
I think it would be just a suggestion for us as a committee and it would be up to the city council to make that decision, would it not?
I, you, you can do as you please. If you want to make it a, a condition, as recommended a condition in, if your conditional use permit, um, if you want to delete that condition and just, uh, recommend to the council that it's something they may want to consider, you can do that as well.
Would you like to rephrase your motion, Mr.?
Okay, I, I will amend my motion to eliminate the landscape requirement with the, um, thought that the council can discuss that next week if they wish to add that in. Otherwise, my motion will stand.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Oh, any other topics in the commission for discussion? Nothing on the agenda? Everything's good? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening.